Right, thank you. We're gonna go ahead and call this meeting to order. Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you for joining. Today is Friday, September 20th, 2024. It's 1:02 PM. We'll officially call the meeting to order. Uh, this is a special meeting of the board. Um, so welcome. Thanks for joining to all my board colleagues. Uh, Dr. Stubblefield and to our staff and to anyone that is joining us online. Thanks for joining us today. Um, so we will start our meeting as we do at every board meeting. We'll read our board norms and protocols. We agree to respect differences of opinions in making decisions for the district. To stay on task when to follow best practices in managing the superintendent and managing the board itself. To stay on task when conducting business for the district, including while at board meetings. To never surprise the superintendent or each other when conducting official business of the district. To read these norms at the beginning of each board meeting and at board workshops as a reminder of how to conduct our meetings. And to continually self-check to determine if we're following our norms when conducting district business. Again, good afternoon. Thanks for joining us, everyone. Um, with that, Ms. Downing, thank you for joining us, Ms. Downing. Um, please, uh, do a roll call.
Yolanda Clark? Yolanda Clark? I see you there. I'll come back. Maxine Drew?
Maxine Drew, present.
Randy Lopez?
Randy Lopez, president.
Robert Mylan? Wanda Brownlee Page?
Wanda Brownlee Page, present.
Rachel Russell?
Rachel Russell, president.
Dr. Nguyen?
Dr. Nguyen, present.
Yolanda Clark?
Your volume may be down, Yolanda.
Just a reminder for folks, if you're not speaking, if you wouldn't mind muting yourself, uh, just so we don't pick up any background noise. Um, and then when you do wanna speak, go ahead and unmute yourself, um, and jump in or raise your virtual hand and we'll make sure to call on you.
We'll try Ms. Clark again if you.
Ms. Clark, it shows it now. Is your volume turned down? Okay. She she signaled present.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Um, okay, so, uh, can I have a motion to approve the special agenda for today?
Still moved?
By Ms. Drew, seconded by Ms. Brownlee Page. Thank you both. Any discussion or questions? Uh, again, just, uh, for clarity, um, I'm gonna ask that we move the executive session a little bit down in the agenda. We'll get to it. Um, Mr. Gohin will join us soon. And so once he's on, we can jump into exec session, but any other questions or discussion? Singun, Ms. Downing, roll call.
Maxine Drew?
Maxine Drew, present.
Randy Lopez?
Lopez, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page?
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell? Rachel Russell? I'll come back. Dr. Nguyen?
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
Yolanda Clark? Rachel Russell?
She came off mute and then went back. So I think she was saying yes. You can put in the chat, too. We can read it from there if you if you're having microphone issues.
So I'm gonna try one more time. Yolanda Clark? Rachel Russell? You have four who answered?
Did we? Did we have four yeses? Okay, thank you, Ms. Downing. So the agenda has been approved. Um, and yeah, if you are having trouble with your audio, um, if you also wanna use the chat function, um, you can do so. Just a reminder, the the, uh, chat is also being recorded along with this phone call. Um, so anything that is in the chat will also be included as part of, uh, the recording, um, in today's meeting. All right, so we'll jump right into again. We're gonna jump to Agenda Item Three, Board Discussion. We're gonna jump to A, Budget Consideration and Impact Statement Template. Um, so as a reminder, board, this was something that was presented to the Finance Committee, um, regarding how we review budgets and department budgets and a template that would would be used moving forward. And this was shown to the board as well. Um, but I will pass it on to Dr. Stubblefield.
Dr. Stubblefield, you're on mute. Can you all hear me now? We can.
Perfect. Thank you.
I will, I have it up. I will share and try, um, to talk at the same time. Um, this document that I'm about to share, the, um, Finance Committee did, um, review it. Um, at our last Finance Committee meeting. Um, and, um, I thought we had a, um, attached one, an example of it being completed, but I'll scroll and talk. But this is the form that we discussed, um, at Finance Committee. Um, Dr. Nguyen, um, had, um, proposed, um, that, um, the form, she proposed the form and we, um, adapted it to this, um, just so all staff could all the departments will complete it by October 18th. You see that date at the top of it. And, um, starting next year, departments will only complete it if, um, they, um, are either, um, requesting money in their budget or reducing their budget. So this one shows, uh, Finance Committee did complete it. Um, this particular one, and I will scroll out, hoping you can see it. Um, it shows how they answered the questions. You have a copy of it in Board Docs. And we just thought it would be helpful, um, to, for the board to see what it will look like and how the questions, um, were answered and then just give you space, um, to ask any questions. So I will go back to the, uh, top of the original and pause and see if there's any questions. But all of the departments, several of them have already completed it. It'll be a way for us, um, to have, um, historical knowledge about why a budget was a department's budget was either increased or, um, decreased, um, as the board continues to make, um, budgetary decisions in the future. Um, and we would do the same for the schools if they were adding something. If we were adding something new or putting more money in any of the line items. So I'll pause and if there's any questions, uh, myself or Steve or Ms. Kaiser will try to answer them.
Dr. Stubblefield, floor is open for any questions from the board. You can go ahead and unmute yourself if you'd like to jump in or raise your virtual hand and we'll call on you.
Uh, this is Ms. Page. I noticed on the form it said if you need a reduction or not. And with all this going on in the economy and all the things that we're dealing with, you would think that we would try to cut back in some ways with every department to try to prevent raising taxes and doing stuff like that.
So Ms. Page, you are correct. That's why every department completed the form this year because every department reduced their budget in some manner, even those departments that, um, had money added to it for to continue things in ESER and/or things that were necessary. Which that budget you all, we started looking at in March. So moving forward, um, once the, um, and I believe in Dr. Nguyen, if I'm in speaking, please, um, tell me. And I'm just referring to Dr. Nguyen because she's the Chair of the Finance Committee. Once the board reviews these documents and start, the reason we're having the meetings now is for the board to come to some consensus around like what the goals are inspect or expectations are for the twenty-five, twenty-six budget so that we can give departments direction around, um, what needs to be done. Um, but we would be waiting on direction from you. And so last year, based off of the conversation, every department reduced their budget by three percent. And so that's why every department is completing the forms this year. If departments didn't, some was more, on average, it was three percent. Some was more and some was less, just depending on how large or small the department budget was. But it again will depend on the direction for the board, from the board. Um, and the last thing that I'll add is that some departments are their budget is all, their operating budget is already very, very small, which is why they could not reduce three percent because then they wouldn't be able to operate. Um, and several departments right-sized in a way, um, that offset, um, departments that couldn't reach that. So we could definitely run through those scenarios if we had direction so that the board would be informed about the impact of whatever the reductions are. Um, in a timely manner to navigate and make informed decisions.
And I guess the reason I ask that is the legislature, and and Dr. Nguyen, you can correct me if I'm wrong. They're looking at the scores and how we might be cut based on that. And I'm just thinking, why not get ahead of the game and make sure that we're doing what we need to do as well as we heard the cry from the community and their concern and 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 you can't do everything, but we gotta do something to show that we are trying to, and I'm not saying we're not, be even more fiscally responsible.
Yeah, so just wanna clarify something. The, uh, at-risk funding being based off of, and we'll, we have, uh, a section for at-risk funding, so we'll talk about that in more depth. That being tied to the performance scores, that is not slated to actually go into effect. And I think until like twenty-twenty-six or twenty-twenty-seven. We are a pilot district, so we will be identifying a cohort and doing those things over the course of the next year, two years. Um, and so we'll make sure that we keep the board informed around what guidance we are getting from KSTE in the legislators. The challenge with trying to pre-cut, um, as far as the at-risk dollars is then when you actually have to cut, you don't have somewhere to go. So I think just knowing and understanding the nuances around that, um, will, um, as we get more information, we'll share it. But I the clear, I think the clarity, Ms. Page, that we would be looking for is collectively as a board, and I think that's the purpose of having these meetings once a month, is the board coming to consensus about what it is or where you're trying to get to. So if you are trying to get to the point where there is some, um, tax reduction to the, um, um, uh, community members, we would then need to say, and the only way that they see a tax reduction if you reduce a mill. And then we would collectively have to work backwards and then make sure that you understand like what it will translate to as far as tax savings for individuals and, um, what amount of state aid we would be losing, um, by reducing the mill. So that, those conversations, I think we do need, um, it sounds like there is some interest in it, but we just would need direction from the board around what you, what scenarios or what budget, how budget scenarios you would like to see and then the time, um, to do that.
Dr. Stubblefield, could you put the form back up again, please?
Do you want me to scroll to any particular section, Dr. Nguyen?
Well, my only comment would be in isolation. Well, okay, here, we, cause we hadn't seen any figures. Um, in isolation, it it doesn't tell us a lot. And so just, just maybe scroll down to the whole thing. And this is why I'm saying when we, when we, um, actually look at individual budgets, the the discussion is probably going to be here with more of the the details. And then we will view this and correct me, Dr. Stubblefield, along with the spreadsheets. Is that how you plan to proceed?
Yes, you would have access to all of those things. So after October 18th, you would have the, um, and we can put it on Board Docs just under budget items. So you would have all department budgets and then all of the spreadsheets. And you would then be able to look at the impact in totality that like you saw where it just ran down the line. It was like this department was this, 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 and this. And here was the total. And then you can go back and reference any department to see what it actually was based off of this form.
And and that's probably will help us all understand how we can use this, cause by itself, it just is part of the picture. And so it it, um, it is, it's a, we're getting to that process. And so this is just, I think, the first step. Correct, Dr. Stubblefield?
Correct. So I would say probably by the November, the the November meeting, all of those documents would, um, be together. I'm I'm not, I'm not looking at the calendar. I think the 18th, we may have a meeting right after that, but the turnaround for that, we may or may not be able to do it, cause I think it's one on the 20th, um, October 20th, but definitely by the November meeting. You would have that, but we can target the October meeting for you to have all of the forms and the documents. So that possibly, um, you would have had your retreat prior to that, but at your board retreat, if this is an item of discussion or a future board meeting for you, you are a future, maybe the November budget meeting is where you may carve out time to talk about collectively, um, where, what scenarios you would like to see, um, and what, um, i- if it is, if you're trying to see, uh, some relief to the taxpayers or if you just wanna see a reduction in the budget, we can, uh, provide those scenarios so you can make an informed decision.
Yeah, I think that would help, um, the members understand how they all fit together. Right now, we're just doing one piece. And it's just, you know, if it's the first time you're viewing this, then it is just words on a piece of paper. But we'll, we'll, and since it's the first time, also, the board has actually used this type of, uh, document, we may have to, um, make some suggestions for clarification. So it's a, it's a work in progress.
Any additional questions on this portion that was just presented on this template? Dr. Stubblefield, is there a second part to that that you were gonna share?
No, no, it just so that the whole board could see an example of the form and what it looks like completed. Um, and then Rachel raised her hand. Rachel, do you have a question? Is she typing something?
So I just wanna clarify, um, I'm finally in a good place. So I just wanna make sure that I understand the pieces that we can expect moving forward. And so we have this budget impact statement. We will have a document that, so that's one piece of it. Then we will have a document for departments that, um, shows the current budget, the reduction. And then we will have, I thought I heard a third piece, but maybe I'm misunderstanding the thing. So that refers to departments. So departments will complete their reduction based on the direction from the board, and then they will complete these impact statements. The schools will also complete the impact statements. But I think I'm missing something for how, and the needs assessments.
Yeah, yeah.
That's the other thing.
Yeah, so a couple of things. The schools are not completing those forms because they didn't reduce their budgets. Their budgets were increased based off of the salary increases. So we didn't, the schools did not do the three percent. The forms that you'll see for this year are just at the district level because every department adjusted their budget based off the direction that the board gave us in March. And so what you already.
I thought I heard you say, moving forward, the buildings would complete it if they made reductions in their buildings. That was not, that is not the plan.
No, if they do moving forward, I was trying to level set for what you will have to make decisions about the future. So what I said is on the 18th, all the, the departments have a deadline of October 18th to complete this form. So every department will have it completed by October 18th. We already have the spreadsheet. We presented that to the board, um, based off of the information. So we just would, you'll have both of those items moving after October 18th. Um, so I think at the October 20th budget meeting, we can put it together like on Board Docs. Here are all the department budget forms and here is the, uh, one pager that we showed and it just had the line of what the budget was, what the reduction was and where the budget is now. And then you'll be able to cross-reference to see the detail from the form. From there, based off what you, the direction that the board gives us, we wouldn't necessarily have people complete the form, but we can do the budget scenarios. And once the board land on this is what we want, if a department's budget is increased or decreased, that department or if it's every department would then do the form again for the twenty-five, twenty-six budget, if that makes sense. And if schools are impacted, they would do the same, but we wouldn't have any, if they are not, they wouldn't do the form. Two.
Okay, that helps me clarify. I guess I just wanted to make sure that as we're moving forward, I'm trying to make sure I have an understanding of the list of things that we will have in order to make informed decisions going back to, um, a comment that was made earlier. So for school buildings, we will have the impact statement as applicable moving forward. We'll have the building profile, the needs assessments, and then they will have their individual building budgets. Correct, okay. And then for the, for the district-wide depart- departments, we will have the impact statements, the spreadsheet, and the department budgets moving forward.
Yes.
Okay, thank you for that clarity.
Any additional questions? Thanks for that clarity and um, Ms. Russell, Dr. Stubblefield, any additional questions from board members or discussion on this topic?
I would just say when we actually get down to it, if there is anything else we haven't thought of, then at that point, we'll figure out how it fits into the puzzle.
Yeah, I I think we're, yes, I think, you know, trying to create this, uh, so we have, make the most informed decision with as much information that we can get. So, um, yeah, so if there are pieces that you think, uh, would help strengthen this or give us additional information to be helpful, please make sure you share that with Dr. Stubblefield. Um, Dr. Stubblefield, I don't know if it necessarily relates here. Um, and it doesn't have to be a discussion for now. Um, but I'm, I know with the department decreasing their budget by up to three percent or some of a little bit more. Um, I know part of the direction of the board was not to impact staffing, but I'm curious. Um, I think there were some positions that had been open for a while that or had been open that probably that aren't getting filled anymore, um, as part of that decrease in the budget by departments and not, I'm not asking for the information now, but I'd be curious, or moving forward, if that's the case, um, how making sure that, you know, that if we can get that information somehow about what positions or, um, you know, the rationale for some of the, the positions that might be getting, um, cut for lack of a better term because of the budget cuts that we're making, um.
So, um, those departments that eliminated unfilled positions or restructured in some way, it should, that information should be on their form for this year because that's how they got to whatever number they got to. So they would say we hadn't filled this position and it was this many dollars allocated for it. So it should be on those individual forms, um, when you look at them.
Okay, thank you.
And Dr. Stubblefield, do you have any plans on restructuring? I mean, the organi- the organizational chart?
We are having some conversations, um, about that. Um, a couple of things are, um, impacting that. Um, so yes, we are, but for some departments, because the, of the reduction in what they need to operate and make sure that we're supporting schools and have things, they're, look, we're looking at restructuring so that they have the, um, dollars in their budget to carry out. Um, some of the things that, um, we need to do moving forward. But, um, so yes, we are, um, looking at that as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, if there are no additional questions or comments on this, um, Item Three A, um, I believe Mr. Gohin has joined us now. Board, um, would you be okay with moving back, um, and going into our executive session? Uh, or do you wanna move that to the end, um, of the agenda? I would think we could jump into executive session. I don't think it's a long one.
Do we have to leave this and go to another Zoom?
You would. So would you prefer?
Well, just have you send it to us?
I did. I sent a, uh, I believe it was a calendar invitation email, uh, so it's a Zoom link.
To Mr. Lopez, can, because of the continuity of it, I would say if we hit the other things, that unless Mr. Gohin or somebody has to leave because, um, like if Wayne chair hits, like then you would have all of the budget stuff out of the way. But that's just, uh, one perspective, but if the board wants to go, you go. I agree.
I'm I'm fine on my end. I'll be here for the duration now. I just had to get here late. Sorry about that.
Well, just for continuity, and I know we're recording this for continuity and for folks watching, let's just continue on with the budget conversations and we'll move the executive session to the end of the agenda.
Mine will be pretty quick. All right. Can you hear me okay? Yes, you can hear me?
Yes.
Yes, we can.
Yeah, always, always have to make sure. Okay, so I will get into a presentation. I thought we were gonna meet in person, so I made this little presentation. See screen. Okay, can everybody see the? Okay, can everybody see the balance scorecard module?
No.
Presentation, yep, okay. All right, hold on. Let's see, presentation, present. Here on my screen. I'm clicking on share, but it's not going, so I can just read this thing to you.
Wayne, would you like to give a little bit of background, um, since I know- but some of the other board members haven't heard kind of what this is and how we add it on to our existing system?
Yeah, of course, I would have computer problems right when this was going on. Okay, so what this is, is that the board in previous meetings during renewals and, um, for contracts and for consultants and things like that expressed an interest in, you know, how is this consultant doing? Uh, how are we doing on this contract? How does it help student outcomes? Um, and, you know, these, you know, directors that were presenting probably couldn't answer very well. And so in an effort to get closer to the information you need, um, a new, uh, module for our contract repository has been developed by Gatekeeper. Our contract repository is known as Contract Now. Uh, it's called Balanced Scorecard. And what we can do is use this tool to, uh, evaluate our contracts in real time um, and give you an idea, I wish my computer was working here, uh, give you an idea of how a consultant is doing. Um, Contract Now, like I said, is the district's contract management and system repository. Uh, Balanced Scorecard Module, I'm reading now, you can tell that, right? Uh, Balanced Scorecard Module, uh, offers a structured approach to evaluate contracts and consultants based on customizable key performance indicators. Okay? And, um, the features are, is that the metrics are customizable. We can create key performance indicators, uh, to evaluate vendor performance and, uh, you know, hopefully enhance.
Did Wayne go away?
I think he, uh, fell off the meeting somehow. He may have clicked something.
While he's trying to come back-
Blame it on the internet. Don't blame it on him.
While he's coming back, what I will go ahead and share is during finance committee, and you, it's small, I know. Um, what he was showing is we would be able to evaluate, um, and we wouldn't have this many questions because that would overwhelm the system. But you, we would do a reasonable number. So you, we would be able to, for consultants, contracts, or, um, what, whomever, we would be able to, um, evaluate it and have it available, um, for, um, end users and information to share back with the board. And it will be, uh, in an automated system. What we talked about, and I'm just clicking through this quickly, I'll try to make it bigger in case you can't see it. Um, this is some examples of what we might rate for a consultant. These are examples, and again, we would make it, um, doable for staff and those who had to complete it. Um, and it, it would all be automated and allow, um, us to have real-time information and scores um, to look at it. And then also it would allow us, if the board ever wanted to see or ask us to share that information, we would do it. Now, our, um, in this implementation phase, we have to, um, you know, get the system, um, uploaded, onboard staff on how to use it, and we wouldn't start with all of those things. We actually will specifically start with consultants since that has come up, um, quite a bit so that we can gather the data around that. I don't know why the internet is not cooperating with Mr. Correll, but I was just trying to fill in the blanks. Anybody who was on finance committee, you can chime in and share of what you might recall, but we did want the full board to know that that's the direction that we were moving in. Um, and it was, Ms. Kaiser, do you remember how much it is for us to add that module? Is it like?
Yeah, it was, I, I think it was six thousand, around that for, um, the first year, including implementation. And then it'll be around five thousand each year going forward. And Wayne is trying to reconnect, um, but I'm not sure if he's gonna be able to. But we could send out his presentation to the board if you'd like us to.
Who would manage this?
So Ms. Page, current, so like if I have a contract with, it, it's in Wayne's area because he manages all of that, but then each per, like right now, we fill out a form, go, I mean, we send things to Wayne and we have a process. This would just be putting it, making it all electronic. So overall managing the system, it would be Mr. Correll, but then each end user would have a responsibility similar to the responsibilities that we have now. The difference would be, we don't currently have a evaluation, like a formal evaluation process in place. And so that would be added into it, and that would be on the end user. But Mr. Correll would be like, here's to, you know, oversee the workflow and kicking it back to you so that it'll be, uh, make sure that we do it. So it would not require additional staff. It's just really, uh, systematizing processes that we, um, already have, but ensuring that it is happening across the system in a, um, consistent manner.
Uh, I think it's a good thing because when we went, I don't know if it was Q or the National School Board Associations, we attended some workshops and they sus- suggested that we do a better job of getting our bang for our buck. We pay all this money and these people swear this is gonna do this and do that. That when we, if we liked part of what they were doing, you could renegotiate the contract to say, hey, we didn't get this, this, this. You swore we were gonna get this or that. We didn't. And then try to get a better deal. Because we're paying a lot, and I don't think sometimes we get our bang for our buck. And to me, this would help assess that and try to provide some documentation that we need to renegotiate. If parts of it's good, I don't know.
Dr. Stubblefield, would you have the, um, um, the list of questions for our October meeting? Or our retreat, I mean, so, uh, we, let us have the, the full package and then let us have what you all have narrowed it down in case there's some questions that we think are important that maybe just overlooked. But to the, to the board, it, the, the presentation is quite informative and it, it would address exactly what Ms. Page, uh, noted. Um, if it is, um, fully implemented. And, and we had a debate on what implementation means, actually. So if, um, you know, the value I think would come from the reinforcement that whoever is either in charge of the presentation, really encouraging the people to fill out the evaluation because there's no reason to have it if, if the people are just gonna not, 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 not use it.
So, uh, Dr. Wayne, I would have to wrap back around to, um, Mr. Correll and then the team. We have not, um, narrowed the questions down yet. And I'm not saying, yes or no, but we, we can at least make sure, we do have the full slate. And if we are saying we don't have it, at least you all could say we would like to see this and this if we don't have it narrowed down, down by then. But we'll talk internally about narrowing it down and trying to have it by October the tenth.
Thank you.
I think, um, to that point, um, I think it would, I think that's one of the questions I have, uh, is around how we, who comes up with the questions or how we structure the questions. I know in finance committee, we, you know, we said we didn't want to have like forty questions as part of the, as part of this process, right? But, um, so I think making sure that the questions, who has input? Is it the, the, for instance, let's say Sped's using a, a consultant, that there's some input from, you know, that end user from the Sped department to make sure that the questions are, um, have some kind of value to them, right? That they make sense, um, to what's relevant, to what Sped's looking for, but also tied, some tie to what the board's looking for to make sure the board's informed, like how it ties to our academic goals or some of the goals that we're setting. So I, so I think that's one of the questions or maybe one of the challenges we're gonna have to work through is how we, how we structure the questions, what exactly are we asking? Making sure there's some consistency, I think, across the board around questions, but maybe there's some flexibility for the end user to be able to, the department or whoever to have some input on what those questions are. So I think that'll be, uh, definitely worth some conversation for us to work through.
I am back. You want me to try or you just wanna move on?
No, I think, Mr. Correll, if there's some additional, um, information you wanted to share, we were just kind of, um,
I was just gonna do some screenshots of, of, you know, what we're talking about here. Um, and again, let's see, I am sorry all of that happened. Um, okay, so I'm gonna hit present. My window. Share. I'm still having some troubles, you can probably see, but let's see.
We see it now.
You see it, you see part of it now. I can't get this thing to go away.
Oh, that's okay. Well, uh, Mr. Correll, what we shared was that you can, if you sent this to Dawn, she can include it in the end of the week-
Yeah.
directly to the board, yeah.
I, I will send it though. You can see the screen now, right?
Yes, we can see the screen now.
Okay, so here, I'll, I'll just, you know, you guys explained a lot of it, you know, as far as the key performance indicators and everything. I, I kinda caught in on the, on the back end of that, so I'll jump ahead to some screens so we can see. So there, there are key and key performance indicators and dimensions. Dimensions are basically categories and the key performance indicators are questions. Um, so it comes down to, you know, we get real time- value of the agreements are.
I don't know if it's just me, but I am having a real hard time hearing him.
Okay, it's not just you.
So I guess I'm having all kinds of technical troubles today. Can you guys hear me a little better now?
That's okay.
It's good when you are slow, but then the moment you like start going, your voice just like, it feels like it's trying to catch up with itself.
Okay, I will try to keep it slower. Um, okay, so what you're seeing here is a screenshot of the dashboard. Uh, it shows, you know, the, the contract, you know, the, um, the vendor. Okay, and the, the total value of the agreements we have with that vendor, how many contracts with that vendor. And I am having all kinds of trouble. Uh, the contract types, whether they're like services or products or things like that. What's here is historical performance over time. And this is every time, this will appear like this. Every time there are questions sent out for, uh, stakeholders to evaluate an agreement, they will record on here. And what will be over here is an aggregate of these, or will, uh, average of these, okay? See, like stats up here, red, amber and green. Red is bad, they're underperforming. Amber is there, you know, they could do better. And green is where they're performing to the standard that we set, okay? The categories appeared down in here, okay? The performance standards appear down in here for scores, and then they're graphically depicted right here. Okay, so we can give you a number, uh, when a contract comes for renewal. And, you know, you can see how they've been performing based on the input from the stakeholders. Does anybody have any questions at this point? No? And you guys can hear me, right?
Yeah, so you can.
Okay, I just, I gotta make sure I haven't dropped off. Okay? Okay, so the objectives are to ensure, uh, consulting contracts' performance meets our goals. We can monitor their progress as we go along, uh, streamlines. This will, we're gathering data as the contracts are going on so we can evaluate them and help you all make the renewal and non-renewal decisions. Okay, um, the timing, so we've had a, I had a kickoff call with Gatekeeper on the seventeenth. Just got it started. We talked through the system and what needs to be done to configure it. And I need to update our process, processes to incorporate the balanced scorecard. And what that entails is a contract's cover sheet that is filled out by people submitting contracts. And so when everything is said and done and the contracts are approved and signed, I can upload them into the system and get the balanced scorecard ready. Okay, and I'm looking to have this operational by the eleventh of October.
Price again, please?
The price, the price of this module is like sixty-five hundred dollars, somewhere around in there. And that's an annual cost. And that's tacked on to the thirteen thousand dollars, uh, a little more than thirteen thousand dollars we pay for Contract Now. So it'll be about nineteen thousand. Little over annually. Again, I'm sorry about all of the, the bouncing and jumpiness of all of this, but, uh, that, and I'll write a, I'll write a, a deeper report as I make progress and send it to you all.
Yeah, you could, Mr. Correll, if you could send the slideshow or the slide deck to, um, the board or to Dr. Stubblefield to then send to the board, um, that would be helpful. And board is your, um, if you, as you develop questions, um, please share those with Dr. Stubblefield. Mr. Correll will continue to share updates on that. Uh, Ms. Russell, I see you have a question, one quick question, um, and then Ms. Russell. Uh, Wayne, do you know, I'm just curious, uh, if there's a vendor, do other, other systems use this scorecard? I'm curious. Yeah, there are. That's on you, being used by school district X, and they're getting rated by school district X. Would we be able to see the ratings from, from other vendors or from other, on those consultants? Just a curiosity question.
Yeah, so the, there are other balanced scorecards in other softwares. Um, but we, I'll have to check with them, um, on that. This is new to, uh, Contract Now. And since we were using the system, I just thought that this would be a good addition, uh, for us. And I'll see if other school districts in the Contract Now sphere are using the balanced scorecard. Did I answer your question or you want me to go further?
That, that's helpful. Thank you, Wayne.
Okay.
Rachel, Ms. Russell.
Sorry, excuse me, just, hold on. A couple of questions that I had, I was not able to attend the finance meeting, but, um, I, it sounds like you said you're hoping to have this implemented by October eleventh. But I guess the question that I had is when do we, do we have a timeline for when full implementation will take place?
Well, I'm, I'm gonna implement it on the contracts I receive, and so the date is gonna be rolling in a little bit down the line. And so, you know, as far as usefulness on this is when it'll probably be for you all, um, a few months down the road. Uh, if you wanna see how a vendor is doing, uh, we need to get some input from the stakeholders. And, uh, you know, that'll, that'll take a little bit of time. Uh, just depending on when they're gonna do their engagements and um, you know, uh, renewal time will be big with this because you'll be able to get some reporting on that. But um, you know, to retroactively put the uh agreements in and get the input from the stakeholders, it'll, it'll be a few months before you see any detail.
And those who are completing the feedback form are those who are submitting the contract?
It's those who are submitting the contract and if, you know, as, as far as part of the um contract cover sheet, they're gonna tell me who the stakeholders are in this, if it's some teachers, others in there and they will be added as stakeholders to the scorecard system. And they will have to complete the uh the evaluations of surveys.
So participants, so if I'm principal and I say we're gonna have this consultant come in and work with all of our staff, all of the staff is going to get the stakeholder feedback form?
Yes.
Okay, I, that is a question. I just wanna make sure that other, those making the decisions are not the only people that we're getting the feedback from, because oftentimes we hear about bad PD or we hear about that wasn't a good investment because we didn't get anything out of it. And so I wanted to verify and confirm that that was the piece. I think the other question that I have um is around policy um for the board to just consider um is once we can get an update, and I know we're gonna have more than likely have a conversation about consultants at the upcoming board retreat, but I think this is also a time to think about ensuring that this um process is something that is inputted and required in policy. Um, and I know that we're looking at a different, a lot of different scopes of what our current requirements are and what uh future expectations are. Um, but I wanna ensure for sustainability that this is something that we don't go away from. And I think the best way that we as a board can do that is through um, that policy. And so I thought I would put that out there as well as similar to the grant um updates that we are provided. I wondered if there was a way to extract the data from Gatekeeper um for the previous month for evaluation submitted and have that be a part of that ongoing um board um information that is shared, similar to the grant updates. Um, so that we can see, um, not that I'm saying we don't wanna go into this system and do all of these things, but there's a clearer, more accessible way to just have it become part of our normal process that we get grant updates as well as we get consultant updates. Um, and Wayne, I think it probably is easier for you to extract data than it is for me to be like, well, I went in there and I looked at this, this and this, and this is what it said. And so.
Well, yeah, I mean, we only paid for you to have a license at this point. It's, it's just for expense purposes. Um, and there are reports in there that I haven't seen yet that they're going to show me at Gatekeeper. Uh, so uh, once I get some examples of those, I can pass them on to you for you to look at.
Yeah, so I would, I think my ask and also my thought would be that we think about how if everyone won't have the user, how we will get this information back to us in a more um updated fashion. So, thank you.
Uh, Mr. Lopez, this is Ms. Page. I have a question. I know we have part of a contract. Do we need to vote on this? We've gotten some of the information, not all of it. But how are we going forward? And we haven't voted to accept this. We already have part. You're adding this to an additional contract. So should we not vote on it?
It's under.
Yeah, it's under twenty, so and then, and it's, we've already paid to add the module.
Okay, I didn't, well, I'm just looking at it.
Yeah. Yeah, Ms. Page, it's barely under twenty. He stated that the current track, contract is thirteen thousand.
Right.
And this is an additional sixty-five, and so it would be about nineteen five if I'm understanding correctly.
Right.
Well, again, I just knew we had.
Did we lose her?
Yes. That's, but yes, so Ms. Page, that's why you haven't voted on it. So we will, um, a couple of things, just so we'll know next steps. Um, so we're all on the same page. Once Wayne gets additional information, we'll make sure we keep the board updated. We will like talk internally about timeline and what you can expect around. Because some of it will be built as is happening. As Wayne said, it won't be retro um active, but one of the first things that we have to do is to identify the questions. So until those are done, you, we won't be able to implement it fully. So that will be our first task is to identify the questions. In that finance committee, we said we were going to do questions for the consultant first because that would be different from questions for a vendor that's providing a service versus a vendor that's providing a product. So we'll have to build that out. I'm not saying I don't know how long it'll take, but that's what we'll, as we have the questions and they're finalized, then you will start to see um as renewals come up. And so honestly, if you were talking about full implementation, we probably would need to go, go through based off contracts, if they come up annually at least a year out from when the questions, if you wanted to see everybody's, but you will start to see them trickle in over the course of a year. So we'll work on what that looks like and where we are. But the first step is to identify the questions.
Right, and I'm sending them now to Dawn to upload and that's it.
I think we lost Ms. Brownlee Page.
We did.
Like she just rejoined, she might be.
She just rejoined.
Okay, once she gets back on, I wanna comment on what she asked. I don't see her on there yet.
Brownlee Page, are you with us?
She's with us, I see her.
Yeah, it just kicked back on.
Um, not to answer your question directly, but remember, we had proposed some conversation on expenditures less than twenty thousand. And so that's something we have to address, I guess, at our retreat. And that would address what you're, what you're saying, what you're asking.
Yeah, and the questions. Yeah, go ahead.
Since I thank you, Wayne, um, if there were no additional questions for Mr. Correll. Bring this back, um, as you're continuing working on configuration of the system. So, thank you.
Sure.
So next on our agenda, we'll go to item three C. Um, this is just general budget suggestion, Dr. Stubblefield.
I, that was not an item I added, I don't believe. I think we covered it when we were talking about the budget consideration form. From my perspective, if there were other um, things that the board wanted to talk about in general with the budget, that I'm not certain, but I also think that was just, budget was the general topic, not that there was anything specific unless somebody had something general regarding the budget.
Thank you.
I don't know exactly what, I don't see the agenda, so I don't know what you're addressing, but um when do you think you will have your, the departments or a a, an idea about what they will propose for twenty-five, twenty-six?
Once we get direction from the board, we would then, I think this year, I can't remember if we give people four weeks or six weeks turnaround time. Otherwise, like, we would just have whatever the current budget is, we pull that together annually, once we have like information based off of how the legislators, if nothing is going to change about the formula, we build the budget off the current formula. Then we always wait to hear about title and then its impact. So in, some of those things don't happen until the spring, so we would have stuff and then if it's impacted, we'll make adjustments. Outside of that, it will be based off the direction of the board.
Okay, so we could make a direction November one. Techno, I mean theoretically, because.
Theoretically, yes.
Formula's not gonna change this year. Okay, thank you.
General questions, the next, um, if you can't see the, the agenda, the next item uh to discuss is the at-risk dollars, so maybe we can jump into that. Um, Dr. Stubblefield, is folks thinking about any other questions they may have?
And Ms. Kaiser is going to share um information regarding that, where we are and update on that.
Yes, so um Lisa Walker and I have been working on this together. Um, she's out, I think, at training today. But kind of our, our draft plan, as part of the pilot, we are now meeting a couple of times a month with KSDE. And um, so as we learn more about what the pilot's gonna look like, what expectations they're gonna have, we will be updating this. So Lisa uh put together just kind of a level one, you know, what we already know, and then we'll, we'll keep working through level three, two and level three um throughout the year. So this was just really our starting point, but kinda wanted to share it with the board, just showing what our draft plan was and get your input if you have any.
And then I'll just highlight, Ms. Kaiser, if you can scroll back at the top, that blue bar, if you can't, T it, you can make it larger on your screen or um, it shows what the amount we get, right, like you see is high density and at-risk funds total for twenty-four, twenty-five, and then it gives you the breakdown. And then um beneath that is the summary, like if you were wondering what the amount um is. Um, also in there, the guidance we've been gi- given so far regarding staff, then in there is to use the, the um calculator, which if you scroll down um is the link to the actual calculator. So we're working through that um because that is the guidance that KSD has given us as far as if staff is being paid for, we need to calculate what percentage. So those are the steps that we um are taking right now. And we, last year, if um based off the new list, started to programs or things that weren't approved, we have moved things around or started to, or in the or for the most part, I've moved them around and aligning that based off the new list because you do have this year to transition. And if I misspoke, Ms. Kaiser, please correct me.
Is this in the library?
In somewhat, oh.
Is this in the library?
It is attached to the agenda under item two D at-risk dollars.
Okay.
And do you have a new.
Is there a current, right?
The new list for approved programs, do you have that in the library?
It's in the library, but what we can do is attach it to this board docs um after the meeting. Yeah.
Is there a list of what is currently being utilized and covered under um within our district?
Yeah, if you scroll, we, um.
Is there a way that we can create a tab in the library? Cause I, all of the pieces feel like they are everywhere. And so is there a way that we can create a tab that just says at-risk funding and you put this doc, that document that Tracy just showed? Um.
Yeah, we can work with Ms. Smith to do that.
Okay.
Cause that, she, if she creates the tab, we can add the stuff.
Okay, I appreciate that. Thank you. And I'm sorry, Tracy, what were you gonna say about the other one? I was not trying to cut you off, my bad.
Oh, no, not, not a problem at all. Um, the top link does show um our, what is able to all the guidelines and, and the programs we're able to use, but we will drop that in that folder as well, so you have easy access to everything. So we'll, all these links.
What I'm looking for is not the fund amount, but like where are the dollars specifically within budgets being utilized?
Okay.
Because it, cause I, if I'm hearing correctly, what I heard is most of this is being used for staffing, staffing, we're having to make a shift and not have as much staffing, which goes to the calculator. And the calculator is still downloading, I guess. And so I'm not sure if there's a way to if there's an easier way to view the calculator, cause when I click on that link, it's still on my left, on my computer.
Yeah, it does take a little bit to, we played with it, but because it's not like ours is uh KSD spreadsheet, but we can see if they can give us like a PDF copy, but it's so that it could, it's out there to be live used. That's why it's like that, but we can reach out to them.
I greatly appreciate that. I didn't realize it was gonna take so long. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Any additional questions on the at-risk funding documents?
Can we have an in-depth, um, let's say more conversation on this at our retreat?
I'm making a note of that, Ms. Yes.
And Dr. Wayne, if there's information outside of this, um, that will be helpful for me to have, if you all let me know, I can work with staff to have that.
Sure, thank you.
Any additional questions on this presented today on the at-risk funding?
Well, just off the top, Dr. Stubblefield, the, the, I guess, the, the cohort information, how you're gonna implement that part. This just has some of the guidelines.
And that's all that we have right now. I think we'll have a meeting before the next uh, before the retreat, so we'll just share as we get it. That's. Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Um, if there are no other questions on that agenda item, um we've covered the budget agenda items. The only thing left on our agenda is our executive session. Uh, board I did just resend or about twenty minutes ago, I resent the executive session link. So it should be in your email. It's a Zoom link. Um, so you'll have to exit out of the Google meets, jump onto Zoom, but remember we gotta come back to close out the meeting to resume.
Mr. Lopez.
Yes.
Also, when we're talking about budget, teacher salary, teacher negotiation, will we, will that be added to this?
So Mr. Goheen probably can clarify that, but negotiations and stuff, all of that, you would have to do an executive session and then when you go to the table. But you can talk about those things in executive session in order to give those who are at the table direction. Am I misspeaking, Mr. Goheen?
Uh, no, that, that, that's correct. I mean, if we're gonna have discussions about items that are gonna be negotiated, we would wanna go into executive session to have discussion on those.
Well, I'm not, I'm not asking to have one now. I'm just saying for future reference, will that be a part of this discussion? Cause we need to talk about what we're gonna pay or what we're gonna do.
Yeah, and those are, I mean, yeah, so that cadence that you all follow each year around negotiations. Last year, because you negotiated a two-year contract, we didn't have the discussions, but this year because um, that we did not, you know, that the two-year contract was due this year. Yes, you will have to engage in those discussions. And technically, you can. And technically, you can do that at any point. You just would have to decide when you collectively as a board want to start to talk about that. They have not identified dates yet. The notice letters are not due until like February, March, I guess. Is that right, Greg?
Yeah, so what, historically, what we've tried to do is to get our notice letter out toward the end of January, first part of February, so that we could start negotiations. Technically, the letters aren't due out till March, but if we can get it out earlier, we have more time to negotiate and hopefully reach a contract sooner than later. That requires, Ms. Page, as you, I'm sure you're suggesting more lead time for the board to have a better idea of what they want to do from a budgetary standpoint, although we can't put that in stone until we're at the table because ultimately, whatever you negotiated at the table ends up being what the cost would be. Obviously, the board has ultimate control over budget and which would include ultimate control over what, what is paid out and how it's paid out. But that still would have to be negotiated and you'd still want to have some discussions in executive session prior to getting to that point.
So Greg, I will just follow up and support Mrs. Page. It's been my experience that prior to this last two-year contract, negotiations carried out far into the start of the following new year, school year. So in an attempt to hopefully be able to get some direction from the board and have those, start those conversations, I would echo us maybe at the November meeting, budget meeting, maybe having a preliminary conversation to start to give leadership some direction and see what we can figure out at that time. So instead of waiting till January.
So I think that makes total sense. We just would want to add an executive session to that meeting then.
Sure, just add that to that November budget meeting. We'll make a note of that. Dr. Stubblefield, if I forget, would you remind me to remind Ms. Smith to add that to that session?
Oh, I'm sure Ms. Downey is putting it in the minutes. But I'll try to remember.
Any additional questions? Comments? If not, I entertain a motion to recess to executive session for consultation with the attorney on matters which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship under a coma to include Dr. Stubblefield, Mr. Goheen, Mr. Lilly, Dr. Campbell. Anyone else? Dr. Stubblefield?
You're on mute, Dr. Stubblefield.
Dr. Jones.
Jones, to go in at two seven, two eighteen for ten minutes. Does that sound right?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, moved by Ms. Russell, seconded by Ms. Drew. Any questions or discussion? Not Ms. Downing. Roll call, please.
Yolanda Clark? Yolanda Clark, yes. Maxine Drew?
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez?
Lopez, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page?
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell?
Rachel Russell, yes.
And Dr. Win?
Dr. Win, yes.
Hey, may I have a motion to return to open session, please?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, right? Any questions? Ms. Downing, roll call.
Yolanda Clark? You can rate, Yolanda Clark. Rate three, okay.
Yes.
Randy Lopez?
Randy Lopez, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page?
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Dr. Win?
Dr. Win, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes. Listen, you threw me off, sorry.
Thank you, everybody. Hey, thanks for a great conversation. We've got some next steps. Appreciate everyone. You all have a great weekend. With that, this meeting is adjourned. Thanks, everybody.